Our next topic is for discussion and it's something that was brought up quite a bit throughout the school year off and on and it's something people talk about quite a bit. And it's the topic of bullying. It's a topic that's important to many, many, many people, myself included. And so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
So as we have discussed previously, I had asked the school department's attorney to provide you an overview of the law.
The comment was that if anyone on the committee had questions regarding the law, that Dr. Burnham would take those questions down and forward them to Ms. Murray.
Correct. However, I think that some of the challenge is really coming from the perception amongst people in the community that if an administrator reports that it is not a situation that's found to be bullying, that nothing is done. So this evening, we have our principals. Additionally, we have Mr. Palumbo, who's an assistant principal at Turkey Hill, but he has spent many years as an adjustment counselor and is very familiar with helping students navigate this type of experience, as well as Stephanie Miller, who is a social worker working with our lower grades. So, and we also have Mrs. Hanscom here tonight in case there's any particular question relative to special education. So I would invite all of those folks to come on up to the table. So maybe one of the principals might want to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we have around helping parents feel that they have been heard, there has been a response, and...
What did he say? Did he say?
When you guys want to talk, you just need to press the button.
Because part of the challenge is a different law around student confidentiality. So oftentimes, if it's not a situation of bullying, the disciplinary action that may follow is not something that can be disclosed. And I think that that leads to some challenges potentially with trust between the parent and the administration, or the misperception that it just hasn't been handled. So from their perspective, they may want to speak a little bit about, you know, some of the challenges with this perception out there in the community, and the types of things that we do do in order to help kiddos navigate conflict at the different grade levels. So, do you want to start off, Mr. Santri?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Burnham. I like the PowerPoint presentation and the information Melissa provided. I guess the first thing I would say is, any type of separation from conflict or bullying, anything that's reported to the school, we immediately investigate that. So we kind of have like a path that we do. We investigate, we communicate to parents what we're doing, and we're educating the students on what's going to be expected. Then we discipline, and then we re-communicate with parents about what we feel our expectations are. So those situations happen, whether it's the four different types of conflict that were talked about in the slide deck, or if that is, fits that extremely tight, narrow criteria that Melissa was talking about that meets bullying. So sometimes parents call us and they're, the biggest thing in their world has been upset, which is their child, and they're using that term bullying as they've heard on TV, or they've heard on Facebook, or they've heard anywhere else that their child's being mistreated. We are not minimizing that fact. We totally understand that. We're going to investigate that. We're going to make sure that that stops. We're going to communicate out to parents what we did. We're going to make sure there are services for each student with that conflict that happened. But whether that incident fell within that very finite criteria of bullying is something that we do down in the line. Like we said, it's a repeated response from a power differential that happens over a period of time between two peers. So sometimes I think, being a parent myself, being someone that's reported bad behavior to a school from both of my kids, we are heightened when we make that phone call. We are upset. Someone has upset my child and I want it stopped immediately. So when we say that might not be bullying, that doesn't exactly calm the situation down. Sometimes parents are hearing, "My child's being bullied," and nobody's doing anything about it. They're not hearing that we're taking this situation seriously. We're going to investigate this. We're going to make sure that these things stop. We're going to consequence or discipline that situation, and then we're going to educate those students through social skills, or social scripting, or working with our guidance counselors, or working with our school psychologists, working with our social workers to ensure that those things don't happen again. So as a parent, I can feel that angst when you're calling a school and saying that my child's being mistreated. It's one of the worst phone calls you can make. Parents are upset. We aren't minimizing that. We are saying that possibly that that behavior doesn't fit a very tight criteria for what bullying is. It doesn't mean that we're not taking it seriously, and it doesn't mean that we're not consequencing it. So due to student privacy laws, is that we can't always communicate out what the discipline has been for a student who has been, that has had conflict. That is, we had a punch in school, or they tripped me, or said something mean to me on social media. We communicate out with the parents that we are dealing with that situation, that we are pretty sure that that's not going to happen again. These are the support systems that we've put into place. These are the things that we're going to do to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And please feel free to continue to communicate with us, and we're going to document this. So this is a documentation for that repetitive behavior that does fit the criteria of bullying. So now that we have, now we have some documentation that if we had another incident or another conflict, that now that kind of widens that narrow criteria for bullying, right? So now it's happened more than once. It's been addressed by adults. We've provided some education on why that can't happen, but that behavior continues to happen. So now on that second or third call, that is when it's fitting that criteria for bullying, and that is when we're filling out bullying reports, we're following the letter of the law, we're communicating with both parents. We, some of the services that we provide for students who have been bullied, we have check-in programs on varying degrees. Sometimes it's once a day when they come into school. Sometimes it's three times a day. Sometimes we have almost like a Google Sheet where we're checking in with them period by period to make sure that they feel okay, they feel safe in our school, and that they, that the adults are aware that we need to pay special attention to make sure that this child feels safe. So those are some of the things that we do. Those are some of the supports that we have. And those are some of the things that we face. Me being a parent on the other side, I understand that I, you know, when I'm reporting out a behavior to school, that I am heightened. And I've used the word bullying when it didn't fit the criteria of bullying. It was because I was very upset someone was mistreating my child. But that's something that we work through when we talk about those things. So I didn't want parents to think that we aren't, we aren't taking that conflict seriously. We are. And sometimes that we can't report out the disciplinary consequences that we put into place if those things don't happen again, and all the communication with all the stakeholders and all the things that have happened in that school. So those are some of the things that we do at the middle and the high school.
And I'd offer an opportunity for either of the other principals to jump in and...
Good evening, and I would certainly support everything that Mr. Santri has suggested. I would suggest that our primary responsibility, even before the academic success for our students, is to provide a safe atmosphere. We all take that very, very seriously. We understand, both as parents, and every administrator at this table is a parent, and as professionals, that that is job one. So whenever there is a complaint of bad behavior of one child towards another, we investigate that with great fidelity, which is no easy task when you're talking about nine-year-olds and 10-year-olds, or six-year-olds and seven-year-olds, and you're listening to five different versions of what may have occurred, right? And you're trying to come to some truth. In fact, one parent said to me today, "I understand there's three versions. There's this one's version, this one's version, and then somewhere in the middle, some truth." But we spend so much time doing that because it's incredibly important for us to be fair in however it plays out, whatever our judgment is, whatever the discipline involved is. Otherwise, it's not successful. We want children to be able to gain a sense of responsibility about their actions, to be able to, as we say, own it, right? Learn from it, and then move on. It's not a label, "Oh, you've done this thing. This describes to us who you are." It is one action, or in the case of bullying, more than one action, that needs to be addressed and that we hope that they can learn from. I think that's an important facet of school. It's that social connectedness and how we deal with our friends and people who we don't consider our friends, and again, that sense of responsibility. That's just the piece that I wanted to add, and I wanted to give Mr. Palumbo a quick, a quick chance to join in.
Thanks, Mrs. Champagne. So as she said, and Mr. Santri said, you know, we really want to get it right. So that will mean usually an extensive investigation because, you know, we want to protect the child who's being harmed, but we also don't want to label the other one as a bully if that's not in fact what that child is. If it was a mean moment or a rude moment, or what have you. I know that, I just wanted to address like what we do, right? Like, you know, how we handle complaints and situations. So this year, we've had 99 discipline reports, right? And those are ranging from physical aggression, non-compliance, maybe a technology violation, harassment, bullying, you know, all the way down to being too rough, right? So we have 99 total. So we had 10 suspensions, 12 long-term bus restrictions, 40 detentions, and we also have a log of parent calls. So I have over, about 110 calls to parents about these issues.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Is this one building or all?
No, it's just Turkey Hill. This is grades three through five.
What do you mean by suspensions?
So in or out of school suspension. So we've had 10 of those.
What's the breakdown in versus out?
Five and five. In-school was five, and out-of-school was five.
Wow, okay.
And then of the eight bullying investigations, we had five with no finding, and three were labeled as harassment just due to the lack of repeated offenses. So, but one of the things we try to do at Turkey Hill, and we think it's working when we compare it to last year, because at this time, we had 153 incidents, referrals, so now we're down to 99. That's, you know, that's pretty good. Cut it down by, you know, a third. But the proactive measures that we think are helping, one of the things is we deal with whatever is reported, no matter how small it seems, because there might be more to the story, and there might be, you know, something else going on, but also that every child feels hurt. So even if someone called them, you know, like a dummy or something like that, like we want to get in there and deal with it because there might be more to it. You know, that hurts to a third grader. But what we're doing, we have the social emotional learning, the SEL. So we have tier one, where the students learn the social skills in the classroom setting, so with their, with their peers, 22 to 24 students. We also have tier two, which provides more targeted support for students in small groups that might need a little more help with relationship building, managing their emotions, things like that. The other thing we've done, I know that Chad's done it as well as a primary school, that we do PBIS, positive behavior intervention and support. So each area of our building, whether it's the CAF, recess, we're trying on the bus, you know, we have our expectations on the bus, but we have signs and things where we want kids to follow those rules, particularly that situation. So one of the things we do is we gather detailed data on where these issues happening, right? So for example, at recess, 15, 16% of our incidents are at recess versus the bus, which is 32%. So we try to hone in on where do we need to reteach these kids. Lunch is actually pretty low, right? It's under 10% now, and, you know, the hallways are at nine. So, you know, we're kind of, those areas seem to be in control. We have to focus more on the bus this upcoming year and, you know, really get those expectations down for the kids. The other thing we added in this year was restorative measures. We have sit-downs, mediations, apologies with the kids. And what I noticed compared to last year, we have less repeat offenders with the mean moments, right? Because we, we try to address those when they first happen, so we don't see them happen again. I don't get the same names popping up. I do have a few, right? We do have some kids that, you know, struggle with that, but for the most part, it's a one-and-done for these kids because we do that restorative practice with them.
How much of the bullying that you guys see is based on either race, gender, or sexual orientation?
So, all right, so none of the reports that I've had are based on that.
Is it because they're funneled into a Title IX, or because they aren't there?
I haven't had any this year that because of race or gender, sexual orientation. It's just been, you know, one kid said another kid couldn't play at recess repeatedly, right? Like, it's, yeah. Tim may have more experience with that, but it's, yeah, it's pretty cut and dry at Turkey Hill.
No, we have had behavioral incidences with those, but not on a repeated measure. After that, it's been addressed by people in the building and that we provide the education around that. And we haven't had a Title IX case.
And LPS, the same thing?
No, we've actually had one that was bullying based on race. But that was our only bullying report. We've had a total of four bullying reports that we've investigated.
And how many bullying reports?
We've had eight, but we've had...
How many there before?
We actually had less the year before. We had five the year before. We were talking about that this afternoon. I think it's because also we're looking for it more, right? And we jump into action faster now, so.
We had zero the year before.
Mr. Palumbo?
Before I ask a question, did you have commentary specifically for the primary school? And I don't want to jump ahead in the scenario of events here, so I'm sorry.
So what you're going to hear, I mean, I don't want to repeat a lot of the strategies and things that take place. Because it's best practice, it's how we've been trained. It's what the law requires, and we've all worked with each other, and we've always had that commonality on how to approach behavioral management in general. I want everybody to understand that safety is a number-one goal. I want kids to want to come to school. I don't want them to be afraid to come to school for any reason. The number-one goal for all of us is to have any negative behaviors that affect any part of a student's day, stop. But that requires, you know, the investigation piece. It requires, like I said, I don't want to go through everything, but it's going to require education on aggressor's part. It's going to require protection on a target's part possibly, right? In any situation. We investigate all bullying reports. Most of our bullying reports from my building can either come through an email or a phone call. Very rarely do they go through a teacher. Very rarely do we see a written report. It's either an email directly to administration or school adjustment counselors, or a phone call to us. The other thing I want everybody to keep in mind too is, every investigation is an independent entity. It's not the same. It's a case-by-case basis, I guess, is what I'm going to say. Because it's going to depend, and the outcomes are going to be set up the same way depending on what happens with those investigations. So even if we find, even if we do a bullying investigation, we find it's a mean behavior, depending on the situation and what the mean behavior was, the outcomes are going to be, you know, widely different. You know, we look at that from a progressive discipline standpoint. You know, it's when we start collecting that data and we start seeing that repeated pattern that the progressive discipline starts to increase, so.
Who investigates specifically? Is there a team at each school?
Administration. It would be the principal and assistant principal.
Okay.
If we need to pull in a school adjustment counselor, depending on the situation, if it's a sensitive situation, we might ask them to just ask a few questions to add to our reports.
Okay.
Or if they have information from a check-in from a student.
And about how long does the investigation, investigation take?
That depends. Like I said, it's a case-by-case.
Okay.
Mrs. Champagne did one today that, I think, five hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, no exaggeration. It was five hours, yeah.
Tony?
This is for the three principals. Do you think that it would be helpful if there was one person in the district that did all of these investigations, or is it better to do them on a school-by-school basis?
Nobody's ever asked me that question before, Mrs. Colmbrini. Now, I've always been a proponent that each school has, the developmental needs of students are different. So I'm not sure if you had one person dealing with investigations over four schools, that's going to make it any more equal because of, you know, the developmental age and the processes that go through. So just processing through that question for the first time, that would be my, my answer.
And I would suggest that if we had only one in the district, knowing that one investigation occurred today, it took five hours, and I would dare say that on any given day, you may have an issue that they're investigating in all four buildings. So I don't know that having a single investigator in the district would expedite any...
And I would say too, that you would pass up on that adult being in a school that had a relationship with the students, that understand who knows who. These were friends, these were enemies, they had a past. Those types of things where, you know, an administrator would have, would be privy to that information.
There's a lot of context, right, about who's reporting and what the background might be. And I think that's pretty valid information that would be found at the school site, not by someone who, for example, sits at central office.
The other thing would be the timely feedback to parents. Like, we have an obligation to conclude these investigations as quickly as possible. So if somebody is doing an investigation in a high school, but I also have, I also have an issue in my building, if they take three or four days at the high school, then, you know, my, my time window becomes longer, and that's, that's not okay either. So.
Okay. Brian?
This is more of a special education question. But can you explain to the public manifestation determination?
Good question. So after a student is, that's on an IEP or on a 504, has been suspended for more than 10 days, and it doesn't have to be in succession. It can be over the course of an entire school year, we're obligated to call a meeting to have a manifestation determination. And then that we consider if the disability has affected those suspensions, and then if so, we need to work on amending the IEP or looking at other solutions to help, to help move forward, to make sure that the student gets the support that they need.
Thank you.
And we do have, we do have a script that's consistent through each of the buildings for the team chair, or for the administrator to lead those meetings, so that it's consistent across that, and to make sure that we hit on every question and to meet the regulation on that for the manifestation meetings.
And if you want me to just add a little bit, Giuliana, you told me this is that through the IEP process, there are, I believe it's 12 or 13 questions that are asked of every student on an IEP that has a disability about, are they more susceptible to bullying, or are they more susceptible to being a bully, and what supports can we put into place for them in this IEP if that is what the team determines during that meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's a question that's asked at every single IEP meeting where we're developing an IEP. And so it opens up not only for the team to address that, to really talk to the student's needs and what that student may need, but I also feel that it opens up the door for parents to be able to maybe bring forward some things that they may have concerns with too. And so it gives that opening to maybe have that discussion at the team meetings.
Peter?
First of all, thank you all for putting this together. I think this is unfortunately a little bit overdue, but I'm glad we're doing it. And I'm wondering how we might be able to leverage this content for a variety of different purposes, for outreach and education and that sort of thing. I have a few questions, and let me preface this by saying that, you know, this is largely informed. My context here is the one source of truth in Lunenburg, which is Facebook. But quite honestly, you know, as a school committee member, a lot of the questions that I ask the superintendent and the chair frequently are raised through conversations and posts that I see on Facebook. I actually get calls from other parents. I think just because I'm in the community and people know me, and I am active in sports programs and other things, I do get calls. But, but not on this topic. The calls that I get don't relate to bullying, but I see a lot of commentary in social media about bullying and about student behavior. And there's always this perception from the commenters that I'm just ignored. Lunenburg doesn't do anything. That place is crazy. There's no control over... Now, I don't believe any of that to be true, and I think that the commentary that we see here tonight is, is a reflection of what I believe to be true. But I think that there are perception issues here. And part of it is just general trust issues that I think we have with parents. But I think it's also like, you know, a part of what we're going to talk about at our next meeting, right? Which is communication and outreach and community building and, and those kinds of things. Your schools are small schools. And when there's a perception that a kid has been bullied by another kid, it's not like that he's not going to see, or she's not going to see that other kid tomorrow or the next day, or next week, or next school year, or until graduation, right? They're always there. And the kid and the parent still has that perception of that ongoing relationship until the point of somebody moves away or graduates. And so these are issues that are going to last a long time when they come up. As Mr. Adams was talking, I recalled a call that I made to him many years ago. It wasn't a bullying conversation, but I was an irate parent over an incident. I happened to be overseas at the time on a business trip, and I was not letting him off the phone. And so I identify with that visceral reaction that a parent has when they think that they or their kid have been aggrieved. And, and so that follow-up, that communication, given a lot of these limitations that you have around privacy, is a really... Is a really hard thing to overcome, I would imagine, right? That makes your jobs really, really challenging. So my, my questions are, are kind of in that area, right? First of all, is, and this is a legal question and we may not have an answer. But are the laws that we saw today? That are applicable to Lunenburg Public Schools, are they any different for a charter school in Massachusetts? Or a parochial school in Massachusetts or any other school? Okay, so I think that that's an important thing, right? What we have to follow here in Lunenburg is the same as every other edu-, K through 12 educational institution in the state. What is, what is done to educate parents on a, that, that, that is not contained to an incident? In other words, like you have an open house at the beginning of the year or there are Friday notices or there are other things that are going on. Is there any outreach that is happening at a building level to parents that says, this is how we deal? With behavior and potential bullying issues and these, this is what your expectations should be in the event of an incident?
So I'll, I'll jump in on this one. That was a point of discussion that came up, um, a little while ago. We all felt that while that is important information to have at an open house, that may not be the perfect time to bring that up. So what we talked about was the possibility in my, at least in my building is having a separate meeting after the open house for people who want to come. As, as one way to communicate that information. The fantastic presentations that Ms. Miller and Ms. Woods put together for our students, we've also shared those with parents. So they have some kind of idea of the language we're using with students and what we're working on with them. So those will continue to be shared because, I mean, they're still relevant. It, it's not, it's not going to be dated material. So, um, we'll be using those for the share. Also, I think, you know, the handbooks, I know it's always a tough thing, but there's information in the handbooks. There's information on the school website, um, you know, so. I think I'm going to start, at least in my building next year, we'll probably start with like a separate meeting for things like that. Because it does have to be brought up, you know, just for that reason. Because reports get given, are given to us of bullying and it was a mean moment or it was a rude moment as you go through the investigation. And I know, um, you know, sometimes that's hard for parents to hear, um, and I understand that. But we always make sure that, you know, we do our due diligence with these investigations. So those kinds of conversations, maybe opening that up and, and just telling them, like maybe repeating the same process that we did here tonight. But for parents at a separate time, I definitely don't want to do it in an open house.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome to the primary school.
This is what happens.
This is what happens if your kid gets in trouble.
Right. I have a couple of follow-ups, but I don't want to. So you outlined some processes tonight, I think that they're really well thought out processes. The most important thing being, well, it's all important, there's no most important thing. But one of the cri-, critical pieces when it comes to building that sense of trust and communication is following up with. The aggrieved parent or the aggrieved kid or, you know, and, and making sure that they understand that while they may not know all the particulars of the outcome. It has been investigated and I actually do think, most importantly, that the kid feels safe. Does that happen every time? Do we know that to be the case and is there adequate follow-up?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
I can say that every time that a misbehavior or, um, an incident or what we call them, um, mean moments. Or any phone call, email from a parent around the behavior in our building or behavior that affects a student. Is followed up with by the assistant principals in my building. They take that very seriously, they're communication experts, they, they're calling parents to let them know that they've been heard about what their report is. And then what we're doing, like I said, in order to make sure that this behavior stops. So I would, nothing's 100%, but that is our goal, that is one of our communication goals. Is to be able to reach out to parents when they're reaching out to us to make sure that their kid's safe.
But Mr. Beardmore, I would add that, as you suggested in your own case, right? That you had this very strong reaction and you, you know, really needed to express it to, to Mr. Adams at that time. I, I think the frustration comes in, uh, at the end of that process. When he assures you, yes, it's been dealt with, it's been investigated, it's been properly handled. But you want to know.
Right.
What does that mean? What, what was the outcome, right? And the confidentiality of that piece, I think that continues to cause a frustration for parents. You know, even when we have the initial conversation, um, perhaps we're saying something like, well, I can't tell you the name of the other student involved. You know, but who was it? Was it this child who's bothered my, my child before? Those are, I think, the, some of the obstacles that get in the way for us and for parents.
Laura?
So I, I found the presentation, the highlighting of mean moments versus systemic bullying incredibly helpful as a parent. Because I'm the mom of a middle schooler, um, and there are a lot of mean moments. Because they're learning, um, and these are kids that went through COVID and spend time isolated, um, and there are a lot of mean moments. And looking through the presentation, um, a lot of them don't, most of them don't rise to the level of bullying. So I think we, as a school district, uh, really need to highlight that difference between the bullying and the mean moments. Cause I think a lot of the times we're saying, oh, it's bullying, we have a problem with bullying. I think we might have a little bit of a problem with mean moments, but I also think we're working on that. We have the guidance team, they're great with the communication, especially when they're calling home the middle school when they call and say there's been an issue. And feeling heard. So my question is, is there a difference in the pathway of communication with parents? If there is found to be bullying versus a mean moment? So if you, a parent calls and says, I think my kid's being bullied and you investigate and it was okay, there was an incident, it was a one-time. Or, you know, it was a one-off, two-off kind of thing. Or, okay, no, your child is being bullied. Is the communication with the parents different depending on the finding?
I'm just going to clarify that, do you mean is it written as opposed to a verbal conversation or a meeting?
No, when you, when you communicate with the parents, when you talk to them, um, do they know more about what's going on? Do you tell them it was bullying? Or, or is it the same, you know, there was an issue, it's been dealt with?
Do you mind if I answer that? So I think that if it does fit that criteria of bullying, it does, as Melissa was explaining. It now hits that criteria that we're filling out a bullying report is a repetitive behavior as part of our process. We would be calling parents in for a meeting on both sides of that. And that, yeah, so I think our communication would be a little bit different. It might not be a phone call saying it's a mean moment. That's when maybe we're getting parents in here to have discussions about what types of services that we can provide in order to make sure that this stops. Does that make sense?
Okay, but are they being specifically?
Uh, if, if it hit the criteria of bullying, yes, because there'd be a bullying report filled out. And that, I would say that this did fit the criteria of bullying.
It's actually part of the requirement for filling out the form.
The school fills out?
The form, it's part of the requirement, yeah.
And all, all of, any of the findings too are reported to the state as part of our state data reporting?
Tony?
So I have a, a child in the primary school and in the middle school. And when, you did send stuff home and when it came home, we had a conversation. And the primary school student, I think it was based on something that he learned from Ms. Miller. Explained mean moments versus bullying and I'd never heard that conversation before. But when I was talking about it, it seemed that they.
Boyer's kid.
What?
Boyer's kid.
Yeah, he had a really good, no, 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 that's only, it only happened once, it's a mean moment, sorry. What, what kind of education takes place at the middle school and the, uh, at the elementary school on, and the high school on this front? Because he had a really good keyed in idea. And it like, you know, probably answers 90% of the bullying claims that you guys get, which is, has to happen more than once. But like, I, how do you explain that to the older kids and do you explain that in the same way? Like does, I don't think Ms. Miller goes to their classes, but do the equivalents of Ms. Miller go to their classes and, and talk to them about it?
Yes, so in the middle school, we have dedicated guidance classes with guidance counselors that go in during enrichment blocks. And they actually teach a curriculum, part of that being Trails to Wellness. But another part of it around being not.
Mike?
Sorry. Not actually the language mean moments and bullying, but really what, uh, healthy relationships look like and what good friendships look like. And those types of little bit more, uh, mature discussions around that. And those lead into our ninth grade health classes when we're having discussions around what healthy relationships look like.
Go ahead.
So I'm very glad to hear that he enjoyed the presentation. It definitely is difficult presenting to an entire grade all at once. So we did do a presentation that was on the difference between, you know, types of conflict. So disagreements, rude moments, mean moments, and then what constitutes bullying. For the first and second graders, we outlined it, um, exactly how they did in the presentation. For the kindergartners, we made it a little bit more developmentally appropriate. But in all of those situations, what we did was we had students identify who they could go to at the school if they were having an issue. As well as yell very loudly, which they enjoyed, um, some self-advocacy statements to practice what they could say either if someone was bullying them. Or if they saw somebody else being bullied. So how to be an upstander, but in a way that's going to be helpful. Um, and then in addition to that, the most recent presentation that we did do was on, um, diversity and differences. So we explained to the students how it's okay to be curious about certain things that might be different or unique. However, it is important to be kind and respectful if you do have questions, um, to sort of help them with those social interactions. So those are two of the grade level presentations that we did. But, um, just as we said as well, we do have the social emotional learning classes I teach in kindergarten. And then Ms. Ward teaches in first and second grade. And those, um, do support children in a lot of different tenants of responsible decision-making, emotional regulation, um, pro-social skills with other students. So those are accessible to all students and then the presentations were just, um, supplemental in that regard.
We have the same and in addition, we also, at both the primary and the elementary school. We have the, um, the opportunity to invite in the Tiger program from Plymouth State. Which is just an excellent presentation about how to be a good friend. And what did you call it, an upstander, right? How to, like how to, how to stick up for, for people when you, when your peers, when you see, um, bad behavior going on. Uh, and then, uh, the fourth grade actually gets a follow-up. The participants from that Tiger program, they go and provide workshops for each of the fourth grade classes. So that's a, a, an annual presentation that we have.
Uh, in this year and in past years, we also have a district attorney come in from Worcester County. And they are, um, doing age-appropriate, uh, bullying and, um, you know, social media use. And the problems that arise and what can happen if you are using those tools inappropriately. So we had those, uh, for our eighth grade this year and we had them for nine through 11 at the high school. We plan on having them back. We have talked, uh, it was, uh, very successful this year. Uh, so they do have one for grades six and seven, so we'll be arranging that for our students also.
And one last one, we also have the responsive classroom program, um, for all of our homerooms. So that's sort of a, a 20-minute morning meeting. It's an opportunity to develop classroom community. They have a share, an activity, a greeting. Again, it's, it's ultimate aim is to create a safe atmosphere for students where they feel comfortable and accepted by their peers.
And we also have that program at the middle school. It's, um, responsive classroom, classroom ramped up. It's called developmental design and it's like, um, an advisory block. We meet once, once a week with the same, uh, in small groups with the same goal as the responsive classroom. Getting a small knit group of kids, uh, talking about social skills or news in the classroom. Or if something's bothering them that they have a safe adult to go and talk to and that happens throughout the year.
Laura?
Um, are we seeing a lot of the social media cyber bullying? That's mostly for you, Mr. Sandry.
We are seeing lots of social media action that includes cyber bullying. We are in a world where, you know, as our students get older, they become a little bit more sophisticated in their language. And the way that they're communicating and they're always one step ahead of people that aren't digital natives, right? We are digital immigrants, we don't have the skills sometimes that they have. We, like I said, we have the district attorney in, but, um, mean moments or mean behavior or bullying. It's tends to happen cyber, on, on social medias. Unfortunately, that's a reality.
Well, I'll make my comment. I, um, as most of you, all of you probably know, um, my kid's older. And the youngest one graduated in 2008. And, um, there was definitely patterned bullying, um, going on with him. Had there been a law, we would have been in better shape. I'm going to tell you, I am so impressed with the growth in this area. I'm sorry that it has to be done, but I'm so impressed with the handle all of you have on this. I think that parents need to realize that you're listening and you definitely are. And I think when parents post on Facebook or something, no, he's paying attention. That's the feeling I had when I walked into the principal's office at 6:30 in the morning and waited for him to come in. You have that mama bear comes out and it's, it's really hard to contain and you don't and you can't and you shouldn't. But, um, I think that's what shows up on Facebook, you know? And after going through this process with any of you. I would think that in most cases, when the parents are open to listening, they would, they would feel like they were heard. And, um, not have to storm the principal's office at 6:30 in the morning. So, um, I, I want to say I'm, I'm very impressed, very impressed with what you're doing. And if a parent doesn't feel they're being heard, what do they do? I guess is my question. If they come back at you and say, you did nothing, I can't, you know, nothing's happening here. And clearly you are saying there is bullying that goes on in Lunenburg as people keep saying, they say there's no bullying. No, you're saying it goes on. You're saying that mean moments go on and rude behaviors go on. What, what happens when the parent comes back at you and said, you did nothing? Or does that never happen?
That's a great question. I mean, so if they're coming back at me, I have done something, but they might not agree with what that is. Do you know what I mean? So it's not that I didn't do anything. They may feel the consequence I provided or the discipline that I provided didn't equal the, the problem that their child had. So sometimes they feel unheard and say, nothing happened. So, um, I would always say, we make ourselves available to parents for meetings throughout the day. If you're feeling unheard, please email, call, call the secretaries. We, we have never denied someone a meeting when they want to come in and talk to us. I try to pride myself on returning emails every morning to a parent who has any questions. My Friday emails aren't newsletters, they're emails that parents can respond to and do. In which I return that response. So that's like a weekly way of me reaching out. So I pride ourselves on our way to communicate with parents. And that would be disappointing if they feel that they're not heard.
One, one other thing, now you say you provide support for the aggressor and support for the victim. the victim. Do parents always take you up on the support, or do they sometimes refuse what you're offering?
That's a great question. Sometimes they do refuse what we're offering, because they, you know, throughout their own parenting beliefs, sometimes when a child's being mistreated, they want that to have nothing to do with another child. And sometimes we don't feel that the most appropriate avenue is to keep two children apart for 12 years, or six years or seven years. They're eventually going to have to interact with each other. So sometimes we offer mentoring pieces. Sometimes it's peer mentors. Sometimes we have an adult come in and try to kind of navigate that. We do offer that at times. And sometimes parents are resistant to having their child interact with the person that had a rude moment or a mean moment with them or a bullying moment. But that is a powerful way in order to stop these interactions from happening, is when students can get in the same room with an adult and try to work things out and see how a perspective of one person or the perspective of another person. It's been a, it's an effective tool that we've used. But we have had parents that are, that are, would more want the consequence than the education or the proactive approach for it to stop happening again. And that's their prerogative. I mean, we can offer different services, but sometimes, sometimes they are refused, I would say. Refused might be a hard time. They don't want that happening with their child. We've also offered for parents to contact parents, too, because sometimes that's the best way is for adults to discuss things. And sometimes parents are uncomfortable with having that discussion with the other parent of the other child, because sometimes they're heightened and it's not the best time to do that. So those are some of the things that we offer that have kind of been, at times, not in whole, say, no, thank you.
I think, I think we're all questioned out.
Well, I'll offer just a couple of other points of information. One is that the district safety team has been exploring apps that could be used for reporting, reporting a variety of things. But bullying is one of those types of things, that they would be able to use an app to anonymously provide a report. I'm not going to get into all the details of the particular app right now, but after looking at more than a dozen rather closely, we have settled on one. We've selected Safer Watch. We have some training going on for the administrators this summer. We are planning to have the training for faculty very early in the school year. And then we will also roll it out to students and give them some training on how to use the app. And informationally, you know, we'll be presenting that information as well to parents. So again, it's potentially a convenience that maybe provides some level of safety for people to speak up. That's our hope, anyway. So we will have more on that as we get into the early fall, and we'll give you an overview of that app and the trainings that have been provided. And again, this was the district safety team. And on the team are members of our Lunenburg Fire Department and our Lunenburg Police Department. And our dispatch is also on board with the rollout of this particular app. So we'll look forward to sharing more information about that in the fall. I would also say that we are on a routine of every two years, taking a look at the bullying plan. And I think one of the things in the interest of improved communication, the bullying plan is very lengthy. It's very redundant. It has all kinds of things in it that are not required to be in it. So it's going to be our goal to really streamline that written plan so that it's more accessible. And it still meets all of the requirements that the law put forth there. So, you know, we'll be working on that over the summer as well. Any last thoughts? I, I just want to thank the entire team for being here tonight. It's, it's a difficult thing when you're that committed to making sure that your building is a safe place for all of your students, to have the chatter out there in the community that implies that they don't care. I hope that everyone who watches this meeting, as well as the members of this committee, can tell how much they care. This is important. It's important for us to get it right. And they do invest a lot of time in making sure that they have all the information they need to get it right. So again, thank you for being here tonight, but thank you for what you do on this front every single day. It's important.